Welcome, everybody, to the Wareham Planning Board Agenda for Monday, May 23, 2022. We will open the meeting with a roll call. To my left, Sherri Quirk.
Here.
Mike Baptiste. You feeling better, buddy? Good. Jane Gleason.
Here.
Sam Corbett.
Here.
And Carl Schultz.
Here.
And the chair is here, so we have a full board. Preliminary business, meeting minutes for approval, October 4, 2021, November 8, 2021, November 15, 2021, December 20, 2021, January 10, 2022, April 25, 2022.
Move to accept.
Okay, I say, everybody got a chance to read them. We have a motion to accept. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you.
I have a little issue in that I was a full member on the, for the April 25 meeting, but for none of the others.
Okay, so...
Taking them as a group.
Um...
And I was actually not here for the April 25 meeting.
Okay, so, I guess, and...
So, we could, we could take it for the whole thing, actually, you know?
And you just abstained.
Abstain.
Okay, why don't we do that for expeditious?
Yep, sounds good.
Okay, so, we have a motion to accept by Sam Corbett, seconded by Mike Baptiste. Take a vote. Sherri.
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Jane?
Abstain.
Sam?
Aye.
Carl?
Abstain.
And the chair votes aye. So, that would be, what, four?
Zero, two.
Zero, two. Discussion, the final EIR number 13940 implication for economic development policies. This concerns the decision by AD Makepeace not to move forward with developing a substantial amount of industrial space here in town. I believe, Ken, you were going to give us an update on that?
Yes, I was. The final EIR is, essentially, the AD Makepeace saying that they won't proceed with the big plans that they had for the BDOD, the Business District Overlay, the Business Development Overlay District. What that does is it, it doesn't allow the development of a substantial amount of industrial space. There's thousands of vehicle trips, thousands of gallons of water that aren't being used, thousands of gallons of wastewater that aren't being generated. And instead, what they put in is solar fields, which don't, which don't have that, those impacts of the utilities and, on the utilities and the roads. It provides us with a significant amount of tax base in place of the, of the other uses that could have occurred there. But what it doesn't do is provide the jobs for Wareham residents, meaning that we don't develop the wealth in the, in the residents because we don't have jobs for them. It's a, it's a, it's a good deal for the town, but not necessarily for the value that accrues to the residents of town. So, what I'd like you to do, to think about is the idea that we'd like to have economic development policies, and maybe we look at the master plan again to see if it represents the goals of the town, to develop properties, maybe expand the industrial districts, or just a plan on using the BDOD in the future as an industrial, commercial development district that could expand the job generation, generating uses that would support people in town. That's basically what, the idea that I wanted to get across to you, that if we want to generate wealth for the residents of town, we want to have the jobs associated with it. If we want to get the tax base and increase revenues to the town, we're still doing that with the, the change in AD Makepeace's plans for their properties. But I think we should look at other properties and think about what else we can do as, as a community as well. So, I leave it for you for a future discussion item. Maybe we can take this up as a master plan update item in the future.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any comments? Of course.
Mr. Chairman, through you to Mr. Buckland. The properties that Makepeace is, is not going to develop in the, in the development zone. Those have, those have zoning protection, right? They, they have filed subdivision plans and other plans that protect the zoning. Is that correct?
Some of them are already built, and they don't need zoning protection.
Yeah, I'm not talking about 140, 150. I'm not talking about those. I'm...
Yeah, there are some recent ones where they have protection, that they've been provided by subdivision plans that froze the zoning of the property.
Okay. That was just... Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments from the board? Hearing none, seeing none, we will move on. Item number three, preliminary business, reappoint a member of the board to the capital planning committee. Notice I said, "reappoint." I would entertain a motion to reappoint Sam Corbett to the CPC.
Second.
Did we get a first?
First.
Okay. Motion by Carl Schultz, seconded by Mike Baptiste. To a vote, Sherri.
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Jane?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
And because you reappointed me to the syrupet, I'm going to give you a double aye. Motion passes for, 501. Congratulations, Sam. Thank you for your... Okay. Public hearings. I entertain a motion that we open a public hearing for Project 12-22 Site Plan Review, Wareham, Mass., 3 LLC, 91 and 101 Ferring Hill Road, MAP 91 and 71, lots 1,000 and 1,007, ground-mounted solar energy generation facility.
Mr. Chair, do you need to read the notice before we open the public hearing?
That's correct.
Oh, that has to come first? Okay. My bad. I apologize. I thought this came after we opened it. Item number three, under public hearings. Wareham Planning Board will hold a public hearing on May 23, 2022, at 6:00 PM in room 320 of the Wareham Multi-Service Center, 48 Marion Road, Wareham, Mass., 02571, to consider petition 12-22 for site plan review from the requirements of Section 590 of the Wareham Zoning Bylaws to Wareham MA3 LLC Care of Atlantic Design Engineers, Inc., PO Box 1051 Sandwich, Mass., 02563, seeking construction of a large-scale, ground-mounted photovoltaic solar project on the upland portion of the site located at 91 and 101 Ferring Hill Road, Wareham, Mass., assesses MAP 91 and 74, lot 1,000, 1,007, in the R60 zoning district. In addition to that, and this would happen afterwards, so I would entertain a motion to open this public hearing. So, moved?
Second.
Second. Motion by Sam Corbett, seconded by Jane Gleason. We'll take a vote.
Before we open, is there any discussion that we need to have?
Oh, we can hear you.
Is there any discussion before we open the public hearing?
I don't believe so.
Okay. I had some questions, but we can open.
Yeah, I would say we could entertain the questions during the public hearing. So, we'll take a vote. Sherri.
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Jane?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Carl?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, 600. Having said that, I just have one small statement that I need to read concerning this. I move to take administrative notice of the prior proceedings. So, based on discussions, that means that all of the project information from the prior presentation will be entered in as documentation for this new project.
I think we need to make that a motion and vote on that, right?
I did say that I moved to take...
Yeah, no, I need to move that, or someone, and then second it, or if you move it, I second your motion.
I move it.
I second it.
Okay, so, we have a motion by the chair, seconded by Carl Schultz, for a vote. Sherri.
May I ask a question first?
Absolutely.
The material that you are, that we're voting to move into the record, does that include prior public hearings, or is it only documentary material in the record?
Strictly documentary.
Thank you. Aye.
Michael?
I got a question. Is this the one that was retracted with a prejudice?
It is.
And now, is it being reapplied?
Correct.
Yeah, aye.
Jane?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Carl?
I have a question. Are, is all of the material going to be physically copied into the new folder, or is, are we just going to keep the old folder and refer to it?
That's an excellent question, Erin.
We could do that, but we could also just, eventually, the folder gets scanned in anyway, so we could just have all the documents from the first one and scan them all together under the new petition number when they're filed in.
But would they be all individual documents, like they are now under the original?
Yeah, we could do that.
So, as long as all of the documentation from the original project appears underneath the new project?
Yeah, we could do that.
All right. Second question, what about any documentary document? Say that word again, Sherri. The documentary evidence that's not in that folder? Is everything in that folder? I think there's other evidentiary material that is not posted on the web. How do we make sure that gets recorded?
I'm not aware of anything that's not, that's in there that's not on the web, besides maybe, like, continuance forms or something like that, but I'm not aware of anything from the public that's not a part of the file, that's not on the website.
Or the applicant? Everything from the applicant, everything from the public is guaranteed to be in...
As far as I know...
21.
Yes, everything is in there, under 2321, yes.
21, it was a 2121, I think.
2121, sorry, yeah.
Okay.
So, we have an assurance that all the documents will be present?
Okay. I'm uncomfortable, but aye.
Aye, okay. The chair votes aye, 600. Having said that...
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board.
For the record. My name is Joe Shanahan. I'm a senior project developer for Con Edison Clean Energy Businesses, and I'm here this evening in connection with a site plan review application for a proposed solar facility at 91 and 101 Ferring Hill Road. As most of the members are familiar, and I suspect Ms. Gleason has familiarized herself, this is an application that was first filed 10 months ago, back in May of, strike that, it's now a year ago, May of 2021. We went through a number of proceedings, as you're aware, over the last 12 months. The reason that we're here this evening and starting a public hearing anew is very simple. With Mr. Swenson's resignation or retirement from the board, the five-member board became a four-member board, and we would prefer to be in front of a five-member board, all of whom have the right to vote on this particular project. So, after consulting with Mr. Buckland, we decided to withdraw that application and refile in order that the five members present, and the alternate, if necessary, are eligible to consider this project and vote on it. I would indicate, although on the chair's motion, all of the documentation in connection with the project, and minutes of public hearings, et cetera, have become a part of the record under administrative notice. I would like to take a couple of minutes to walk through and complete the record, particularly for Ms. Gleason's benefit, because she was not a participant, and I don't believe attended all of the previous hearings. Again, this application was first filed a year ago. In follow-up to that, there was a public hearing in July of 2021. There was a site visit by Mr. Buckland and members of this board and me out at Ferring Hill Road. Purpose of that site visit was for a couple of purposes. Number one, to give the board members the opportunity to view the location and the proposed access, and to give consideration to sightline for various residences in proximity, if you will, to the project. At that time, with the members of the board's input, we decided upon which properties would be appropriate for us to do sightline diagrams, and we have ultimately done those, submitted them to the board, and they are part of the record. The other thing that took place while we were there on the ground was board members looked at the plans and saw that our project, while it is screened from the street very well, board members were concerned that the access drive was a straight run into the project site itself. So, the board members requested that we revise the site plan so as to create a curved driveway going into the site to eliminate that visual impact of a straight look into the site, and it was also requested that we add landscaping along that curved driveway to further screen the driveway from view on Ferring Hill Road, which we, in fact, went on to revise the site plan to do that. Subsequently, we reviewed the plans with the fire department here in town. Fire department issued a letter in August, I believe, of 2021, and we are in compliance with the request of the fire department. In the fall of 2021, during a meeting, Mr. King had certain input with regard to the project. The first thing he indicated was that there were four proposed utility poles on our access driveway. He indicated that a previous applicant for a solar project had been able to convince the utility to eliminate certain utility poles, and we made the commitment to go out and try to do that. As a result of efforts over several months, ultimately, EverSource agreed that we could go with one utility pole, and the equipment that otherwise would have been on the other three poles would be on ground-mounted systems. So, we eliminated those three utility poles at the suggestion of Mr. King. The other thing Mr. King suggested, and again, it wasn't a direction, but he had mentioned that another project, I'm not sure whether it was a solar project or just a development here in town, but the developer had committed that it would not make any money off of the timber from the trees removed to do the development. As a result of that, we went out and hired a Massachusetts licensed forester who performed a tree inventory of the trees to be removed in connection with the project, and in turn, put a valuation, market valuation, on the timber that would result from the trees. That timber valuation was $19,690, and we've previously committed, and I'll commit again this evening, that in connection with this project, the amount of $19,690 will be paid to the town of Wareham to be used in its discretion for plantings and mitigation, or whatever other mitigation processes it might want to consider. In late 2021, at the request of then-chairman Swenson, we were asked to perform a noise study to make sure that this project would in fact comply with the mass DEP standards for facilities such as this. We hired an internationally renowned firm to do that study, HMMH. They came back with their results. It was a productive investment, if you will, because they had a couple of suggestions to improve upon what we already had on our site plan, particularly a couple of sound attenuation improvements around the transformers, which are located in the middle of the project, and those have now been added to the revised site plan. Oh, along the way also, we had requested early on certain waivers from the requirements of your zoning bylaw. The planning board was pretty much unanimous on the fact that this project would be processed in full and strict compliance with the local bylaws, so we in turn agreed to withdraw all of our waivers and revise our site plan accordingly. The chief request for waiver at that time was to lessen the buffer zones around the project, but again, we withdrew that request, and we have added those buffers back into our site plan. So, at this point, over the last 12 months, we had pretty much done everything that was asked of us with regard to the site plan itself. We undertook the studies that were requested of us. But one of the main concerns of the board and of the abutting neighbors, of property owners, was the matter of groundwater runoff, and in Mr. Swenson's words, is this project going to make that situation worse? Is it going to make it better, or is it going to create a situation that will be the same? So, in October, we committed to the town to pay the $33,000 to do the study by Horsley Witten. To be candid with you, I never in my life expected it was going to take six months from beginning to end, but on Friday evening at 5:08, Horsley Witten delivered that report to the town and shared it with me. Talked to Mr. Buckland, saw an email from Mr. King. Were in complete agreement that that particular report ought not to be brought up and discussed this evening, because it's just unfair to ask anyone to have reviewed it and have comments over the weekend. So, I expect fully this public hearing will be continued to your next meeting on June 13, and I would hope that we can discuss it at that time. So, that pretty much brings us current to where we are, Mr. Chairman. I would like to take a couple of minutes and let Rich Tabazinski, who is our consulting engineer on this project from day one, present some of the technical aspects of the project, and then turn it back to the board. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Rich Tabazinski with Atlantic Design Engineers. And as Mr. Shanahan had mentioned, there's been a lot of time passed since the last hearings that we've had, and so I just wanted to briefly go through some of the numbers and, and the site plan with you, and to introduce it to others that have not seen it before. But the project is such about 40 acres of land on the north side of Ferring Hill Road. It's in the zoned R60. There are no special overlay districts or anything, other than the standard zoning of R60. To the west of the property is an abandoned railroad bed. To the north and northeast is conservation land, and then to the south, mainly along Ferring Hill Road, is a series of residences on both sides of, of Ferring Hill Road, and there's also some residences to the west on the other side of the abandoned railroad bed. The, the site plan shows the distances between the development and all the houses that surround it, so I'll, I won't go into every single setback distances that we have, but they are shown on, on the site plan on sheet three. Terms of wetlands, those, those have been flagged by a wetland specialist and surveyed by our company. We have filed a notice of intent and have continued hearings with the Conservation Commission regarding the work that's in the 100-foot buffer zone to those wetlands. Those hearings have, like the planning boards, have been continued. They, the Conservation Commission is not ready to make a decision or issue any order of conditions without the project being fully reviewed and completed through the planning board process first. So, in front of the Conservation Commission, we're just on an ongoing continuing basis of those hearings, so... But the wetland flags have been, just briefly go through, the wetland flags have been reviewed by the Conservation Commission and their agent. Minor adjustments have been made, none that had any effect on the development end of things, but just were adjusted by the Conservation Commission through that process. And so, the, the development is proposed with an access road that's, starts off at 20 feet wide, coming off of Ferring Hill Road, and as Joe had mentioned, it comes off and veers to the right fairly, fairly quickly to provide a limited view into the site as you're passing that access road. It'll, the road will go off to the right, and then it'll be vegetation from there on in. And that road continues up through the middle of the property, kind of splitting the, the array into, essentially into two arrays, the eastern and west side of the road. That access road will have equipment panels, equipment pads for transformers and other electrical facilities. I'll be on each side of that access road. And then, that'll also be a fully gravelled access road with a turnaround at it. We've discussed things with the fire department and provided an access around the entire array also. That was at their request, and so that was an adjustment we made on the plan, adjusted some panels on the outside to make sure it truck and could get vehicular access around the array. The interconnection will be right, as Joe had mentioned, be right in front of the property at, at the entrance to the access road. We have eliminated a lot of the proposed utility poles in that location, and are working with the utility company now to finalize that design, but everything will be basically underground from there on in, going up to the site. Property, the fenced-in area will, the solar array will be security, will have security measures through a fence and proper signage surrounding it. Just to give you some numbers on it, the fenced-in area will be a little over 19, probably 19 and a half acres in, in size. The area of clearing, which does extend outside the fenced area for grading and stormwater measures, will end up being about 23 acres or so, as, as per the latest design. And the rest of the site will be left in a natural state, including, per your bylaw, 50-foot untouched buffer from the property lines to the limit of work. And so, that's, that was one change that we did make through the process, was to maintain that 50-foot no-work zone. Stormwater measures have, have been proposed. Essentially, Ferring Hill is on the property. It divides the watershed into basically two, two areas that drain, one to the northeast, towards the conservation land, and another watershed that drains to the southwest, towards the, the abandoned railroad bed that was mentioned previously. Basically, both areas, northeast and southwest, are considered wetlands. Obviously, the one to the northeast is a large, very large wetland system. The one to the southwest is basically, the low abandoned railroad bed has enough of vegetated, vegetation and soils to, to create a wetland at the bed of that abandoned railroad, so it's, it's just kind of a long, narrow, skinny wetland edge along the, on the west side. So, basically, because of that, we've had to do with drainage design that meets the DEP stormwater standards. We've, and in order to do that, we've proposed several detention basins, stormwater basins on the northeast side of the project, and on the southwest side of the property. northeast side of the project and on the southwest side of the property. Those are meant to store any excess stormwater that's resulting from the development, stored in those basins and release it at a slower rate that matches basically the amount of water that's leaving the site under existing conditions. And that's basically the water leaving the site to the north, to the large wetland system to northeast and the smaller system to the southwest. That stormwater system and its design was the subject of the extensive peer review by your consultant. And like as Mr. Shanahan had mentioned, we just received comments on that, so we'll be looking at those and looking at whatever adjustments we may need to make to the stormwater system to satisfy some of those comments, as well as comments from your own consulting engineer, Mr. Rowley, who had a comment letter on the original submittal, and we'll be working through addressing those comments as well as any of the comments from the Horsley-Witten Basically, that's it. Joe had mentioned also the buffer screening along the southeast side that's shown, on the southern side, that's basically shown on the site plan along the limit of work. And the sightline cross-sections were also submitted along that. I have a board here that shows those. If you wish to go through, for me to go through those, I can, but they were part of the record also previously. Basically, that's an overview of the project, and we'll turn it back to Joe.
One other procedural, Madam, Mr. King, if I may, and it alludes to Mr. Schulz's question on the previous AD make-piece project. Along the way, as most members of the board are aware, we did file a preliminary subdivision plan for this site, and within the seven months required by statute, we went through a definitive subdivision process, and this board approved that definitive plan. So the zoning for this particular application was frozen through that procedure.
Yep, duly noted. Questions, comments?
I have a list, so.
You have a list, and we'll put you last.
Okay.
Sherry, questions, comments?
I want to hear Carl's questions first.
Okay, Mike?
It feels like somebody's holding a gun to our head. You know, we had a lot of public input before. It seems like why are we going through the same process? And it seems like we're circumventing a lot of information, public information. I don't think that's right for the people of the town, and I don't think that other people putting inputs into it could have no say in what goes on in our board. I think you know what I'm talking about, Michael.
I don't. I'm missing something.
Well, maybe what I read in the paper, I was misled, but it seems like the selectmen are involved or encourage us to approve this project.
No, no, I can attest to that. That's not the case.
That's the impression that I got, and like I said.
That story was written inaccurately, and it was addressed with the editor at the paper. That was not.
I just think it's kind of a shitty way of going, doing business.
Chairman, at an appropriate time, may I respond to the various questions or comments?
Shirley.
Yeah, Mr. Baptiste, I have no idea what you are indicating is someone holding a gun to your head, and if that applies to me or our application, quite candidly, I resent that accusation. We are doing everything exactly the way your local bylaw and approval processes are set forth. Anything that's been asked of us, we've done it. Any study you've asked us to do, we've paid for it. So there is no attempt to circumvent anything in your local approval or review process. And I have no idea what article you're talking about, but if you're talking about the Board of Selectmen and this project, no one affiliated with this project has ever had one word of conversation with any member of the Board of Selectmen or any other board other than the Conservation Commission in the town of Wayham, and I assure you of that.
Thank you for that. And Mike, just to put your mind at ease, that article was addressed quite sternly by.
Well, you know, we had a lot of time invested in this project reviewing it from before, Mike. It was through without prejudice, and all of a sudden, it seems like within a week, it's right before us again, and.
Well, I can assure you from my standpoint, there is no pressure on us.
And I have explained, Mr. Baptiste, as simple as it is, we withdrew and refiled solely to get to a five-member board, and it's simply a matter of mathematics. We're required to have four positive votes to get approval of site plan application. I would not be doing my job if I went forward looking to get four out of four when the math says the chances may be better, and I'm not sure they will be, but they may be better of getting four out of five or five out of five, and it's as simple as that. Nothing surreptitious whatsoever.
Thank you. Jane, do you have any questions?
Not yet.
Not yet. You're in wait for Carl, too?
Yeah. That's a good start.
Okay, Carl, you're up.
Okay. My first question is procedural through you to the planning office. In the folder 12 Dat-22, there are five, six, or seven letters that are unrelated from other, to other planning boards to, unrelated to this project. What are they, what are they, and where do they come from?
Those were submitted by Annie Hayes. It was from the public. She submitted those as reference to this project.
Thank you. I didn't know where they came from. Okay, got that. Again, through you. I would like to thank Mr. Shanahan for his summary. I think there are a couple of things that you missed from last year, particularly things that I was interested in, related to the decommissioning plan. So the decommissioning plan as submitted still contains salvage value, which I don't believe the board finds acceptable.
Okay, we had not been advised of that, but if that's the case.
I raised it at one of our meetings. I could get the date for you, but anyway. So just be aware that we're typically not accepting salvage value, and the primary reason being the town, that surety bond really protects the town in order, should we have to take over the decommissioning process, and we wouldn't want to be on the hook for that, for that amount. We don't know that we would get it.
I understand.
So that, I just wanted to share the reason that we have.
I appreciate it. We'll take care of that.
The next item also relates to the decommissioning plan. You've included a 2% cost escalator, which was probably acceptable at the time. At this point, inflation does not look like 2% is a good estimate, so I'm going to recommend to the board that we request something closer to the historical average, 5% or 6%.
Actually, you're correct, Mr. Schulz, and you're going back a year ago. I just did that analysis for another municipality, and for the last 12 months, it's been 8.3%.
Right, so we'd like to discuss.
We'll adjust accordingly going forward.
That value.
Thank you.
Hang on, just taking my notes here. Okay, we talked about the escalator salvage value. Just as a point of clarification, Rich, I'm not going to try and say your last name.
Tabazinski. God bless you.
I practiced in front of a mirror for a while, so I'm going to.
Just a point of clarification, in your statement, you said CONCOM, or the Conservation Commission, was going to wait for the results of this board. Per our bylaws, we cannot approve a site plan special permit without input from Conservation Commission. That has to happen first. So we will be, it's clear in the bylaws, if, for site plan special permit, I can find the reference for you, I don't remember off the top of my head, and Sandy's fully aware of that. If there's a question, I'm just providing input.
Mr. Schulz, I've seen the bylaw also, I think more appropriately, and I don't want to put words in the Conservation Commission's mouth, but they were particularly interested in the results of the Horsley-Witten report.
That, 100%, 100% on board with that.
So therefore, we'll go back and see them now that that report is in.
Yeah. One more, going back to the decommissioning plan, just a note, and this I probably didn't bring up in October because I didn't think of it, but there's no line item for removing the fence in the decommissioning plan.
Okay.
And also, one of the, again, I paid a lot of attention to the decommissioning plan. It was something I was interested in. We should also remain open about removal of the posts, so we should plan for the cost of the removal of the posts, but I think the bylaw is open enough and we're open enough that when we come to that time, we, should the project, all this is assuming the project goes forward, we would want to look at what would happen to destabilizing the soil if we pull the posts out.
Good point.
The goal would be to remove everything and return it, but if pulling the posts out, or at least the footings, destabilizes the soil.
Just for your information, there likely be no foundations. They'll either be pounded in or turned in, but I understand what you're saying.
Right, so that was just a comment. One more thing that was open on my notes, I do, I do agree that you submitted a noise study, but we never reviewed it. So the meeting, all the meetings following when the noise study was submitted, I think we never actually had the meeting to review the noise study, so I think we need to open that. And another open item was the issue of historic and ancient ways, which we never, you had a response, it's there, but I don't believe we ever reviewed that in a public forum.
Okay.
Those were my comments.
Perhaps those two items can be added at the continued public hearings so we can.
Right, yeah, I'm assuming, yeah, there's going to be more review.
Thank you.
I'm just, noise study, hydrologist's report. Okay, I believe, and I believe all of those were the things that need to be brought forward for the record.
Happy to do so. Thank you, sir. Sherry?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, to Mr. Rowley. I'm assuming this to be true, but don't want to assume something that I don't know for a fact. I'm assuming that reviewing the hydrology study, making sure that the runoff issues, if any, are adequately addressed, is within your wheelhouse, and we don't have to look for another expert to help us on that.
Well, I, forgive me for not being able to answer you directly if I don't get to your direct question. I'm hard of hearing because I've got an inner ear infection, so I can't hear people very well. I'll try. I did submit a report, and there were several questions I had in that report. This dates back to the first project. So that documentation is available. If you don't have one, I can make sure that you get one.
And my question, I'll try to speak a little bit more loudly, and I'm very sorry about your infection. What I was trying to ascertain is that for the hydrology study that was just submitted and that we just had a chance to look at, that review of that study and developing any mitigation measures that may be necessary to deal with the runoff issues is within your area of expertise, or do we need to think about hiring another expert?
I don't know that you need to hire another expert. That report's about 66 pages long. I had a chance to review it a little bit this morning. I haven't digested a lot of it. Very technical information contained in it, a lot to digest. There were some things in there that Horsley-Witten put into their report in the form of recommendations. There were some things that were in my report that did not get addressed by them. So I would simply, I think I would hold off on any further comment until all of us have had a chance to read that report, and at the same time, I wouldn't put too much weight into what you see on that board right now, because until Mr. Tabazinski has had a chance to review that report and see whether or not he has to make changes in it, you may be looking at a plan that's not the final one by a long stretch. So I don't know that an additional expert is necessary. I've dealt with stormwater things for the 40-odd years that I've been a registered professional engineer, have done test sites, have done testing myself. I'm familiar with the terminology and the technology which is contained within the Horsley-Witten report, so that I think between the two of us, we can come to some conclusions. I think one of the things that's important, though, is at some point that a representative from Horsley-Witten be here to be able to answer your questions as well as some that I have, because there are some things that I think are important that they didn't address. I'd like to know why or what their feeling might be about those, but we need to know what that report says and be able to understand a little of it before we get into that detail.
Thank you. You've answered my question.
I would point out, Mr. Chairman, that your contract, we're paying for it, but it's your contract, you're entitled to have them before you and do exactly what Mr. Rowley has indicated.
You know, I think that's an excellent suggestion, and if possible, they could be with you for the June 13th meeting. That would be helpful, because I'm sure there'll be questions, not only from Mr. Rowley, but from the rest of us. Jane?
Honestly, I'm still working through my way through digesting all of the material.
Yeah, the report itself.
In addition to the hydrology report, but.
I got through about 20 pages of it before my eyes rolled back in my head.
Yeah, this is even before I get to the hydrology report, the rest of the file.
Mr. Chairman. One comment on the hydrologist's report, Horsley-Witten report, that's easier to say. I have to go back, and I don't remember the final contract, but I know that I was very specific asking for their risk assessment for unknowns and impact, and they did not provide a risk assessment in that report that I could find. If they did, I missed it.
Did you get through all of it?
I read.
You're the better man than I.
I didn't say I understood all of it, and I, some sections I skimmed, but I did get from front to back.
Okay, well, I'm sure that if they're with you at the next meeting, that we can certainly address that question from.
I remember that distinctly, Mr. Chairman, very succinctly. Mr. Swenson and I had conversation with Neil Price from HW, that's even easier, and the summary that I just presented to the board from Mr. Swenson was as simple as that. I want you to tell us, will this project make things worse? Will they make them better? Or will they create a situation that remains the same? And that was a pretty concise, rigorous assessment. I've read it twice, and I would agree with you.
Okay, so if you could prep him to be prepared to comment on that question when he comes, that would be helpful.
Please keep in mind, Mr. King, they are not my consultant, they're your consultant.
I understand, but I think.
Perhaps through you to the planning office, we could have Ken or Aaron communicate that question.
Oh, we could do that.
In acknowledgement, it's our contract, right, is what you're saying?
It's our contract, it's our consultant.
Yeah, okay, so if we can communicate to them that, you know, A, we'd like to have them here on the 13th for the meeting, and B, that we would expect that they will be able to talk to the question of risk assessment, which wasn't addressed in the report, so that when they come, they're not blindsided, they know what's waiting on them.
Will do.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from the board before I put it out to the public? Any more input from you?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Public comments?
Public comments.
Out there?
That's where we're going next.
Oh, okay.
I'll say it louder next time. If there's anybody in, from the public that would like to comment, please feel free to come forward.
Do you have a way to play something from a thumb drive?
As long as it is, A, new material and B, not longer than three to four minutes. If it's, if it's a lengthy presentation, I would have to say no, I wouldn't entertain.
I had taught, I had asked you about that, Mr. Chair, and I'd asked, I told Ken that I had this, and he didn't say no, and I don't know if you saw it in the email. And I don't know if you saw it in the email, but you didn't say no either, so I made it. I did give the option, and what I would request would be that it starts to be shown, and then if each person could receive it independently.
Well, yeah, I mean.
It didn't, I'll tell you what. The whole issue of, excuse me.
I'm sorry, Annie. Is, is a, a drive able to be uploaded to the website as a document that can be viewed by the public?
Yeah, depending on the size, if it's, is it a PowerPoint or a video, or?
An MP4, it's eight minutes long.
Yeah, depending on the size, we could, we could probably upload up there, but we could also just, if you, if I were to have the flash drive, I could probably just send it to each board member as well.
Yeah, well, I'd like to, I'd like it to be available to the public as well.
Yeah, so I'll have to, I'll have to see if it can fit on the website, and I'll talk to Matt tomorrow about that as well.
Okay. If you, if you want to con, comment on it, Annie, but, you know, eight minutes is kind of a long presentation, and we do, we do have other things to address tonight.
I understand that. I would also suggest that Leslie and I both made it, so that's two comments. That's really basic math, Mike.
Yeah, I owe you one now, yeah.
So, I would, I would like the public, at least, to see, see the start of it.
We could see the start of it.
That would be great.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, could you ask the presenters to introduce?
Sorry?
Yeah, Wes Ken has the video file.
Yeah.
Oh, you can't do it? No.
Oh, well, I guess that addresses that. Before we go any further, Annie, I, I know who you are, so I failed to ask you, but could you please identify yourself?
Annie Hayes, Fifty-two Ferring Hill Road.
Leslie Edwards Davis, Precinct One.
Thank you. All right, so we don't have the ability to play it here, anyway. Okay, so, Erin, if we can make arrangements to, to do our best, even if we have to split the file into part one, part two, just so that it's up there for the public to see, because I think it is important that, that the public see it, as well, as well as the board.
Excuse me, where would they see it?
It, it'll be loaded as a file on the town planning website under this project.
Okay, great, and you would each receive it individually?
Correct.
Great, thank you. I just want to speak. I have a subject matter here. You know how Stacey Benahan comes in with like four boxes, this is my, and Mr. Schultz, I'd like to respond to you about why I put the Mount Pleasant project on. A while back, Mr. Shannon, Mr. Shanahan said that all of his projects were well-received, and da-da-da. And I had spoken to the planning board at Mount Pleasant, which is in Valhalla, New York, where Con Edison headquarters are located, and you've seen it on the MA, you know, the project address. And they initially approved, and then they disproved, not just because, as Mr. Shanahan said, the public, they caved with the public comments. There was Pace University, there was Bronx Conservancy, there were a whole lot of very good documents, and so, that was a refutation of Mr. Shanahan's statement, that's why I submitted it. And his, and his project.
Thank you, I had no clue.
For very similar reasons. I didn't know if, if there had been some line, as I had expressed, to have it understood.
That's fine, I just didn't know what it was, and I certainly wouldn't have read it in that context.
Yeah, I know, thank you for asking, so I could explain it, it looked like it was just sticking there. I want to speak at first to your discretionary judgment. We know that the DOE are strongly, this is the guidance document to, by the Energy Resources, Department of Energy Resources, to the policy regarding solar energy. The DOE are strongly discourages locations that result in significant loss of land and natural resources, including farm and forest land, and encourages rooftop siting, as well as locations in industrial and commercial districts, or in vacant disturbed land. Significant tree cutting is problematic because of the important water management, cooling, and climate benefits trees provide. The Mass General Law is usually stated in the negative, you shall, solar bylaws shall not, in order to protect health, safety, and welfare of the public, but here it says there's a high degree of municipal control over the location and permitting of such systems that may be consistent with the Chapter Forty-A, Section Three mandate that regulates reasonable and necessary to protect public health, safety, and welfare. All of the things that I'm interested are in the public's health, safety, and welfare. And this video is documentation not of the worry about the amount of water runoff, but about the value of Ferring Hill, the whole hill, the hill as an entity, a living being of animals, forests, and water, that is a watershed. And in the project that is proposed here, the headwater to that watershed is on the highest point of Ferring Hill, which is the ninety-two-foot point on the ridge that borders their western boundary, and then is dropped off, is actually truncated somewhat, at the railroad tracks. And another, so, it, it shows the living watershed, because I took it after a good rain, an hour after the rain, and I documented the volume of water that's running out. And one of the concerns of our neighborhood is that we have a lot of private wells. When Mr. Swenson was the chair, he told Mr. Price during the interview, there were zero private wells. And so, I went to the water district, and did the math, and discovered that in the first circle around the hill, because the hill, as you know, is not just what we call Ferring Hill, it's a hill that goes in all directions, down to the rivers, Sipican and, and the Weebe Antic. There are two hundred and eleven out of two hundred and fifty-nine private wells. So, even though people had newer construction, they chose to keep the older wells, and I had, have had mine recently tested, I'm on the north side of the hill, right behind this project, and it's just, it's pure, great water. And it's not just pure, as in no nitrogen, it's pu, it's pure, what I consider, because it has a lot of nutrients to it. And that watershed carries those nutrients all through the land that is Ferring Hill. And I wonder about when the, we don't even know yet, I don't think, answer if I'm wrong, but I remember there was still that open question about how much of the top of Ferring Hill did the project propose to shift around, make into burms, you know, dig out? How were the contours going to change? Do you know, Mr. Rowley, has that been definitively answered?
No, not at this point, and again, I think it would be premature to comment, because we don't know what alterations may be made to this plan based on the Horsley-Witten report.
Fine, thank you, but I'm glad to hear that, because I never heard an answer to that. So, done? Okay, one, one last comment, then, about my standing, is that my wetlands, about this project's wetlands, the water doesn't see any boundaries, private property, and all the water that comes from Ferring Hill, as an entity, comes down through their wetlands into my wetlands, and I have a lot of photographs, they're just, they're just massive fern fields in my wet meadow, from water that is partly from Ferring Hill, if not largely. And then it goes down my major meadow, and eventually through the wetlands, and I have a vernal pool in the backwoods, and into the Sipican River. So, all of the land around is affected by that precious water, and we're not just concerned about, you know, how it's going to get recharged, or discharged, or not filtered, because it's not going to be filtered like through the forest, we're concerned with losing the natural progress and process of that water, processes of that water, that have nurtured that land, since, you know, little bit by little bit, organic material was dropped on a receding glacier rubble. I mean, it's, that's a miracle right there, right? Thank you.
Thank you.
Can, can I make comment, or did she take my time? It's okay if she did.
She used a big chunk of it, but that's okay. If you want to make a comment, you're, you're welcome.
Thank you.
Okay. Is there anybody else?
Good evening, Nancy McHale, I'll try to keep this of, I live on Ferring Hill Road, sorry. I'll try to keep it brief. Can I just ask you to please clarify what information is included in this administrative action?
The information is everything that's been presented since the initial project was presented to us a year ago.
Okay, are the minutes also included of all of those public hearings?
They should be in, in there, as, as documents, approved minute documents, as they've been approved, they should be in this file, yes.
Okay. And again, those are more comprehensive, so they wouldn't necessarily be under the Ferring Hill Project twelve dash twenty-one, or at this case?
Well, they, they will be, we've already talked, we've already spoken with Aaron, so everything that was in the original project is going to be transferred over to the new project.
Okay. I would.
Point of, I don't think the minutes, the minutes are not in the twenty, twenty-one, twenty-one, the minutes are recorded on the website.
On the website.
Under minutes.
Okay, so, the, the information is on the planning board website.
Okay. Just because people are going to ask, you know, some of us who have been more intimately involved, if you want to put it that way, what's all involved in this administrative action, I would, would highly encourage, Jane, I know that you've got more than enough to do, to encourage Jane and Sherri to take a look at some of the passion of some of the neighbors that spoke, that may not have gotten captured in those, those minutes. That being said, the other question I have would be for Mr. Shanahan and Atlantic. It's hard in terms of looking at all of the iterations of the site plan that have been submitted, to make sure that there are real dates on them, so that we're all looking at exactly the latest iteration of whatever's been submitted, if that's at all possible, when they, you know, put everything on the, on the, the website.
If I may, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, if you could come, come forward, Joe.
As Mr. Rowley alluded to earlier, while all of the plans are part of the record, the revisions, revision dates, et cetera, as a result of the HW report coming in, this revised site plan will be revised at least once again. So, you won't have to go back historically and piece it together, there will be a final revised site plan, based on the Horsley-Witten recommendations, Mr. Rowley's recommendations, and the input of the planning board.
Okay, so, I, I appreciate that, but specifically, you had said that there were adjustments made in some of the documentation about things like the, the noise report.
Please address the question.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Mike.
That's okay.
There were differences in the report, or made in the, in the proposal, in the project, based on things like the, the noise report?
Which are currently incorporated in the most recently revised site plan.
Okay.
So, we're up to date until the HW report came in, and now there will be further revisions based on those recommendations.
Okay, so that the site plan, as part of the application for twelve dash twenty-two, that plan is, includes all of the revisions that have been made.
Up, right, up to, up until this report.
That revision.
Right.
Okay, because it seemed, in terms of reading your let, Mr. Shanahan's letter, that it was exactly what had been submitted for the twelve dash twenty-one application.
Well, it, it, nothing's changed between the time that the old application was withdrawn and tonight, so that information is unchanged. The only thing that's going to change is when he takes feedback from the HW report, and addresses some of the concerns, then they'll do another iteration of the plan, and then that will be the newest plan.
I just wanted to make sure that the plan that was submitted for the twelve dash twenty-two was the most up-to-date, and included things like the changes that they had made to the noise, and the sight lines, and any of the other things.
Yes, it does.
Okay. Thank you very much, appreciate that.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public that would like to speak? Any other questions or comments from the board?
May I make a comment? Yes.
Over there?
Yeah.
Yeah, sure, of course.
Okay. What I would say is, it, it's correct that the passion doesn't necessarily carry through in the minutes, no, no offense to the minutes. I think, to the extent, especially on new information coming in, that you can communicate your thoughts and, and feelings about it, that I would certainly find that helpful.
And, correct me if I'm wrong, but aren't all of the meetings associated with this on?
Yeah, you just, they're all, all the meetings are recorded, so if you want to view what people actually said in real time? You can either look on YouTube, or you can look on the WCTV website, or, if it's not on there, I have all of the CDs for all the meetings, so you can come by the office and you can.
Right, so anybody wants, anybody wants to refresh themselves with the, the past meetings, they're all recorded.
Yeah, start with YouTube or the WCTV website first, because the majority of them are on there, there might be like one that's not, but the most of them are on there.
Thank you.
Carl?
Mr. Chairman, to follow up on Ms. McHale's question, and Mr. Shanahan's answer, I, I don't quite see it the way Mr. Shanahan presented it. The site plan review application binder on Project twelve dash twenty-two is a truncated part of the application, does not include noise study, or any of the, so I, I just, it's not all in there, and the full site binder, which is, I'm sorry.
Same page, Mr. Schultz, are you talking about the original binder that was filed in May of two thousand?
No, I'm, I'm talking about the one dated May third, that's published on the project website. It's a truncated application, does not include the full, the full, doesn't include the noise study, doesn't include.
No, because it's been made a part of the record.
No, no, but I, I, I wanted to clarify what I thought Ms. McHale was asking, she was basically saying that that document is in fact not a complete record, so, my belief is, is that you need to piece it together. So, you need to take bits and pieces, and they're not all, all the pieces have not been carried forward, so I think it's.
Or they need to be.
Well, and, and it's going to be, the onus is on us, as a team, to make sure that the application has all of the most current pieces. So, I'll just pick the decommissioning plan, for example, and, and I know you didn't update it, but I'm just saying, it's not, it was included in the, the original application, even the old data is not included in the new application, so, and I understand exactly what you're saying, that it, that it was brought forward administratively, but you can't read one document to get the, to get the whole picture.
Just to be clear, and I know Mr. Buckland will agree, he and I conferred at length in connection with this process, and it was agreed upon as to what would be required to be filed, and what would carry over, so I, I understand your explanation.
Yes, I'm, I'm, I'm.
And it is correct.
I'm perfectly, I think, which is why I said in the beginning, I was a little uncomfortable, do I have all the pieces? But I wanted to clarify, I think, Ms. McHale's question, no, you have to piece it together to figure out what the, what the current application is. And then, I don't know, through you, the planning office, perhaps, and I know the problem is we can't create subfolders on the, on the project site, but if we could find a way to group, and, and I, I'll be glad to work with Aaron in the planning office, group the application documents, the most current, in some kind of place, so you don't have to pick through the entire list, to try and figure it out. Now, a way to do that might be to create, you know, twelve twenty-two A, twelve twenty-two B, so we could create folders, sort of, I, I don't know, but you're right, right now, you have to do some work to figure out what all the pieces are, and what the most recent pieces are. That, so, that was my, my point, and, and I, I understand exactly what Mr. Shanahan said, and you did exactly what you were asked to do, I agree.
Mr. Chairman, I, I suggest maybe we, we put together a list of documents, just to list out all the documents that are in the file, that would address the previous documents that were submitted, as well as the new documents that were submitted, and you could then go through the list and find out what you needed to review.
Okay, well, I just want to make sure that all the information for this new project is brought forward, like we're telling the public that it is, and that it's easily found, I mean, rather than making them hunt for it.
Well, there are a lot of documents in this file, it's, it's gonna be hunted for regardless of, of what you want to, you're gonna have to look for the documents, because we have tens of, tens of documents in the, in the file right now.
Okay, thank you. Hand up.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Can you hear me okay?
We can.
Thank you very much, my name is Barry Kozgrof, Precinct 5, just a quick question, if I understood the Atlantic engineer properly, if I didn't, I apologize in advance, the gentleman indicated there's no overlay district over the property. My understanding of Section 440 of the zoning bylaws creates a groundwater protection overlay district over all boundaries of all districts established within the bylaw. Somebody may want to look at that, may, may have relevance. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, still, again, I think it, to be honest, a lot of this hinges on that, that report. Is there any other comments or questions from the public? Having seen none and heard none, I would entertain a motion to continue this public hearing.
I move.
Till June 13, 2022. We have a motion from Sam Corbett, a second from Kyle Schultz, for a vote, Sheri?
Aye.
Mike? Jane?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Kyle? And chair votes aye, 6-0-0.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you.
Mr. Shanahan, could we also get a note from him asking for the continuation to, to June 13th?
Get it into you by email tomorrow morning, Mr. Buckland?
That'd be fine.
Tomorrow's good. Tomorrow'll be good, yeah.
We'll take care of it, thank you.
Thank you. Continued public hearings. For hearing and possible vote, 33-21 Site Plan Review, Wareham PV1 LLC, Zero Route 25, MAP 115, Lot 1000, ground-mounted solar energy generation facility. Do we have? We do.
Should I give these to you, just the hard copies of the figure?
Yeah, you can just hand it off enough there. It's kind of stuck behind you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Sarah Ebaugh from VHB, I'm the Site Civil Engineer here on behalf of the client. We also, on the Zoom call, have Betsy Mason from Clavens Law Group and Haley Orbadel from Long Road Energy, if they're able to be promoted. Okay, great.
Are they gonna be presenting, or just speaking?
Just speaking. Haley, H-A-L-E-Y, Orbadel. Okay, perfect, thank you. So as you mentioned, this is a continued public hearing, we were last here at the April 11th hearing. The last item of discussion before the board was regarding the vegetated buffer along a couple of the property lines of the property in question. The figure that you have in front of you has a couple of small differences that we adjusted at the request of the board, mainly the property line that's abutting the southern part of the town maintenance facility, as well as the property line abutting Route 25. The previous version of this figure had shown a 50-foot vegetated buffer along the property line with the town's maintenance facility, and a 10-foot buffer along Route 25. At the recommendation of the board, we sort of split the difference with that to provide 25 feet of vegetated buffer, where we would manage the existing vegetation along the town's maintenance facility, as well as 25 along the Route 25 property line as well. The remaining property lines sort of have the same intent as previously discussed at the April 11th hearing, mostly on the, the southern part of this property, as we've discussed.
Thank you. Any questions? Well, we always want to start with you, because your question's great.
Well, I could go with, okay, and I apologize, I don't remember agreeing to split the difference. I believe the bylaw is very clear that on the property for the project, the buffer needs to exist entirely on their property. I don't, and if we said we were gonna split the difference, I apologize, and I will abide by that, but I just don't remember that. So that's, that's my first comment, and we can discuss that.
Yep.
That's my only comment right now on the vegetated buffer, but there's some other parts of the application we've never actually discussed. So moving ahead, I did mention to Ms. Mason last year, when we were in that quasi, what are we gonna do phase, that the decommissioning plan needed to be reviewed, and much like I mentioned to the previous applicant, that your decommissioning plan actually is, is larger than their decommissioning plan, which is good. Your decommissioning plan still includes an adjustment for salvage value, and it does not include the required cost escalator. And as we discussed, we need to come up with what we think that value should be, but 5%, 6%, 7%, the board needs to decide on that, in, in consultation with the applicants.
Of course.
But clearly, we don't want to see the, the salvage value, and it needs to have some cost escalator. Let me just see if I had any other comments on this project. Yeah, those were the only, we, I know we haven't talked about it in the past couple of meetings, but I did mention it last year.
Right.
But we were not really focused last year.
Got it.
So I, I understand that. Those are my two current comments, I'm still reviewing. I could be picky. Just one other, Mr. Shanahan pointed this out, in the application, and I did point this out last year, you said the application would be subject to the 2018 zoning bylaws, that, that was incorrect, this will be the June 12, June 2019.
2019, yes.
Yes, yes, and if I may, Betsy Mason, I apologize, you did say that, and I have that on my list of corrections to make, and I should have submitted something to the board before now, but yes.
Yeah, no, it's not a bit, as long as everybody's clear, we, we, we all know which set of zoning bylaws we're looking at, so.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Sam?
What's gonna happen to the cliff on the charge pond side? I mean, it's almost straight down, a lot of the area does not have any shrubs or vegetation at all. What's gonna happen there?
So you're referring to the part of the property north of that access road?
Well, along the entire side that's opposite charge pond is almost.
So this, sorry, we can, this property line here? So, as is proposed, we do have the fence on the bottom of that slope, and then within the fence line itself, having the, the solar panel array, so everything is going to be constructed at the bottom of the slope, just, again, to not create a lot of earthwork disturbance on the site. We are proposing, as it's noted in the application and stormwater report, meadow mix within that area. It has been used on slopes before, we are proposing to leave the existing shrubbery that exists on those slopes as is, sort of provide the meadow mix as an additional coverage for that area.
I don't, if, if what you're referring to is the pitches that I saw.
Cliff.
It's not a, it's not a slope. It, it's a cut.
Straight down.
Yeah. They just cut into the hill, it's a 90-degree drop, so how, how do you propose to get meadow mix to grow on that?
So not in that, yeah, not in that location.
I don't see that happening, so that might be something you want to look at.
So, yeah, again, just in that area, we are, we don't want to create a situation where we have to import a lot of fill to sort of flatten out these slopes, where we can, we will.
Meadow mix kind of indicates you expect it to grow.
Exactly, yes.
It's straight down, it's gonna wash away as soon as you put anything down there.
Understood, yep. So we will take a look at the existing slopes, we do have survey and contours in that area.
Could we do riprap or something like that?
It's still a, it's a drop.
It's straight down.
It's almost like a retaining wall.
Why don't we build a retaining wall with riprap, that's what I meant, or something.
See, would they come back?
Yeah, riprap needs more than, it's, needs more of a slope.
Oh, it still needs a slope? What about the cage, the rocks in the cages?
Cab, cabion or whatever.
Gabion, or.
Whatever they're called.
Yeah.
Maybe, but.
Food for thought on how you, how you plan on controlling that, that back ledge. Sam's right, the pitches I saw, it was, it was just a.
Okay, I was in Saturday.
How high is it?
It looked like it was about eight feet, the pitches.
Okay.
Might, maybe taller, I don't know, the pitches were deceiving.
It's not 90 feet, it's 80. I'm just trying to get scale, I haven't been out there in a while.
That it's it? As far as your questions? Okay, Sheri?
Nothing for me.
Mr. Michael? Nothing? I find that hard to believe.
Well, I'm, I'm just trying to grasp how you're gonna grow grass and existing shrubs on sheer.
Right.
It's sand.
Well, it's not gonna happen, I mean, it's obvious they have some work to do, to address that.
They must have some new technology out there, I'm a dinosaur, so I'm not up to these new technologies they have, you know?
So we did, sorry to interrupt, note, just the, this deep slope over on the corner, the one-to-one slopes, where there is shrubbery to remain, not calling specifically out the area where there's the sheer wall, so we will look into that.
Jane?
I think my two questions about the buffer and the sheer contours have been asked and addressed.
Okay, so I, I think, coming away from this, as far as from the board's perspective, it's Kyle's concern about the scrap value in the decommissioning, the escalator, which I'm not quite sure if it's within our purview, but I'm thinking a 12.
It's called out in the bylaw, specifically.
I'm thinking, I'm thinking a 12-month rolling average of the current inflation rate would be reasonable.
Yeah, we, actually, the bylaw is kind of vague on how it's calculated, and I think it, the newer bylaw is a little clearer, but.
But I think in the current economic conditions, because it, it does have the ability to be reviewed every five years anyway, so if three years from now, we can pull ourselves out of this.
The current bylaw does not have a five-year review.
I, I believe it's, I believe it's a condition, we can put it in.
We can, but the current bylaw, the new bylaw requires that, but the current bylaw does not.
Yeah, but we can put it in as a condition, so if we do pull ourselves out of the mess we're in right now, obviously, we can readdress the, the escalator.
One, one more point, though, in the new bylaw, it's quite clear, the new bylaw, not, the escalator will never be reduced in the new bylaw.
Betsy Mason to the chair, we would certainly agree to a condition that reflects changes that Mr. Schultz would like to see to the decommissioning plan.
Okay, so.
Obviously, perhaps you have some more crafted language already, but.
The plan is, the plan is great, we just need those two little.
Yeah, we just need a little tweaking, so the.
Great, yeah, no, we were ready, ready to be fully responsive to that.
Okay, so, all right, so we're agreed, then we walk away with the understanding that you work on the decommissioning plan, and you come up with some ideas on how to address erosion control on that sheer face that's been carved into the hill?
Yes, can I actually respond to that really quickly before we move on? I did have the, a couple photos from our wetland scientist, who has been on the site, surveying the, the wetlands off of the property. There are some photos that show that the slopes out there are currently vegetated, I don't, if, there's this very specific area, I, I think it might be smaller than we're in, like, we're anticipating maybe not the whole length of the property line. Again, we are trying to minimize the earthwork, if those slopes do exist today, and all of our construction is outside of that, and at the bottom of the slope with the.
They think that the concern that's been brought up is a result of earthwork, so.
Understood, we don't, of course, we don't want to make this any worse, if the, the slopes out there are currently vegetated, and again, maybe we can get some more photos just to clarify that exact location.
Yeah, when you come back, if you come back with a plan, and your assertion is that those slopes are, are vegetated, then some new pitches would definitely be in order.
And, and Betsy Mason, just to sort of, you know, make the point again, to the extent there was prior earthwork on the site, I think Sarah just said it was outside of our proposed work area, in addition, it's not relevant to the board's consideration of our site plan review application.
Noted, thank you. Okay, that's all you have? Okay, I would.
I'm sorry, if I may, Betsy Mason again?
Yeah.
I, I feel like I would, I would like some closure on where we are with regard to the vegetated buffer plan. I understand that one board member did not recall that we discussed the splitting the difference, if I can note, and Sarah, please correct me if I'm wrong, but we did make all of the adjustments for vegetated buffer, you know, expanding it in certain spots, narrowing it in others, on, on the parcel that is in question here, so we're not, where we're talking about the southern boundary of the town facility, the southern boundary along Route 25, we are, that is solely on the parcel in question when we're proposing the project, we're not looking to either the state highway layout along Route 25, nor are we looking to any town land along the southern boundary of the maintenance facility. So, I mean, we actually have, to be honest, taken a little hit on the number of panels we can put in, because we understand the importance of the issue to this board, and one last point, I think, perhaps it was Mr. Schultz last time, to, just to, to point out again, that we are essentially, not exactly in the middle of the woods, but certainly far off from any abutters who would be concerned with visual impacts, and I think the, the balancing act that we've tried to do along Route 25, along the southern boundary of the maintenance facility, at least it was my understanding, those were the board's primary concerns voiced at the April 11th hearing date, so we tried to, in the spirit of that conversation, I mean, I don't know that we actually said split the difference, but I, I do specifically recall saying, why don't we do 25 and 25? And the board said, let's see what that looks like, so.
That's, that's noted, Betsy, and I do remember.
Thank you very much.
I remember the conversation, they were.
Thank you, sir.
They were a little bit weak on the, on the buffer along Route 25, and they were a little heavy on the buffer to the, to the town yard.
Yes, sir.
And we were more concerned with shielding it from people on 25, and not so much the town yard.
I, I acquiesce that, if we're, if we're allowed to grant a waiver, it's a very specific, hard and fast requirement in the bylaw, if we can waive that requirement, fine.
Okay, thank you.
If I may, not to belabor the point, I apologize, but, I mean, I think, at perhaps the first hearing, after the Attorney General's decision, I started lunch into a legalistic, boring discussion of why, in fact, the 50-foot buffer is not applicable here, so I would just want to. just want to, you know, throw that dirt on the ground again.
Okay, thank you.
Not to be contentious, but just to, you know, make note of that, thank you.
Yeah, yeah, okay, thank you very much.
Of course.
Is there anybody from the audience? Nobody in, we have one person in the room?
Thank you, Nancy McHale, Precinct Five, Farring Hill Road. I just have a question through you, Mr. Chair, to the proponent. In, I've heard a number of conversations about topping some trees in, within the buffer zone, so that they don't shade the, the panels. Will any of the trees within that twenty-five feet be topped?
No, the buffer.
Not in the buffer, okay.
The buffer is not to be touched, that's, that's our, that's our loan, our domain.
Okay, the other question then would be, there's a, a solar project not too far from that, that you can also partially see off of twenty-five. I don't know if anyone knows exactly what the buffer that's within that, what that is from Route twenty-five, but that you can still see, but it's not offensive in terms of, you know, being able to see it too, too much, so.
We actually use that project as a guideline for, for guiding this project.
Okay.
And, and I'll be honest with you, I've never seen it. I'm on that road all the time, I, I've never seen that project.
That's because you, you're driving, you're not the passenger sometimes.
Oh, that might be.
That, okay, um, thank you very much, I appreciate that.
Thank you. Uh, we have somebody online.
Good evening, can you hear me okay?
If you can, thank you.
May I kindly share the screen, please?
Yeah, could you please identify yourself?
I, I beg your pardon, this is Barry Cosgrove, Precinct Five.
Okay, Barry, keep in mind that we are keeping presentations short and sweet, three minutes, four minutes maybe.
If I could share my screen, I'd be grateful.
It is.
Hello?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you very much, and thank you for your service to the, to the town, it's a thankless job, I know at times, and I'm hopeful some of the information I can provide now will help you make your, your decision here. I wanted to pick up with just a few very quick points where, where things left off, and the question was whether the Site Plan Review Board had jurisdiction to consider the site conditions themselves. And, and it really struck me as an amazing question, and, and I had an opportunity to talk to Mr. Buckland about it, and, and we used some examples of, you know, what if this site, which we know is a subject of a number of investigations, you know, what if it was a nuclear waste was found there? Would you, would you allow a grammar school site plan to be repealed on it, just because while the site's different than the applicant? The point, I think, is an obvious one. It, the site itself is in fact within your jurisdiction, and this landlord is in privy of contract with the project, and the project doesn't exist without the landlord. And your Site Plan Review Bylaw, not the conservation bylaw, not the earth removal bylaw, but page one-eleven of your bylaw makes it clear that in your review of a site plan, you have to take into consideration compliance with all applicable sections of your zoning bylaw. And at page twenty-seven, if it's helpful, of your zoning bylaw, there are prohibited uses, and mining without a permit is one of them, and mining within four feet of historic high groundwater table is another. Again, this is not the earth removal bylaw, this is a zoning bylaw. Your jurisdiction is clear and compulsory. You can't regard the site. We've seen enough of these photos, this site was an industrial-scale earth mining operation, these aren't tanker trucks, tanker trucks, you can see the massive amount of sand that's been removed here, you know the slopes, you've seen the cuts. It's also important to remind you, again, that you have a mission statement, and you guys signed on to that, ladies and gentlemen, signed on to that, and your mission statement is even broader than your bylaw. It says that your consideration of a site plan has to consider all state and local laws and regulations for compliance. And I just ask the obvious question, how can we now say, well, that's just a mission statement? How does that really matter? I think the public needs to have a very clear explanation of why we would not honor our own mission statement, to make sure the site plan review included an examination of the lawfulness of the site itself. I'm not asking, nor is anyone else, asking the planning board to become the conservation commission of the board of selectmen, asking you to acknowledge that your own bylaw makes consideration of this site compulsory. Second.
George, Barry, if you could, you're at three minutes, if you could wrap it up. A lot of this information we've seen already, so if there's something new, please present it.
Okay, just make the point that all the points that were alleged to be speculation the last time, you made the point, I think, Mr. Chairman, you were going to confirm with the town council or the town administrator. If you did, I'm sure you learned they are all factual and verifiable.
Okay, thank you.
And I would just say, please, on this fifty-foot question, I'd be, I think it's really worthy of an analysis of the right-of-way that is under, over the town land. I'd have not seen it, but I think someone should look at it, because while we're negotiating, or you're negotiating over this fifty-foot thing, which by the way, the other night at conservation, they were dealing for ten-foot, if the right-of-way is only a right to pass over, and not a right to put an industrial-scale electrical line underneath the town's land, then you certainly have a lot more leverage. And Mr. Riley's initial review has a number of points which have not been addressed, and you know there are multiple investigations over, underway. Optionality is key, and it would be a mistake to close the public hearing, because there's a flaw in the bylaw, not your fault, but there's a flaw in the bylaw. It says you can't issue an approval by the conservation, but if you close the hearing and nothing happens in sixty days, you're stuck with an approval that's forced upon you, which I'm sure you wouldn't want, and I wanted to make sure that you wouldn't want to take that risk. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment, questions? Okay, hearing none, seeing none.
Just a follow-up question, Mr. Cosgrove raised a point that I hadn't thought about, through you to the applicant. Are you planning to use the public right-of-way, or the right-of-way, the town right-of-way to run electrical conduit and your connection? I didn't note that.
To Charge Pond Road, yes.
So you're planning to go over the, the right-of-way? I didn't consider that. Does the right-of-way agreement give you that right?
Uh, I will, Betsy, yep.
Yes, Betsy Mason, I, I can provide documents to the board, but yes, there is a, a taking document that specifically provides for not just access to and fro, but also utilities. And I guess the short answer is yes.
Okay, thank you, I just, till it was raised, I didn't even think about it.
Okay. Sure.
I think there's an important issue to be discussed with respect to that right-of-way. It's, it's a twenty-foot ride easement that was granted by the state to the various landowners that had frontage on Cranberry Highway, and where they were cut off from access from Cranberry Highway due to the construction of Route four-ninety-five, or twenty-five, whichever you want to call it. I think that document should be reviewed with respect to what actually rights were granted. It may be simply rights of access, I'm not sure whether the rights were granted that allowed utilities or other things to be put in that twenty-foot right-of-way, the same as it would for other instances, I don't know. But the one thing I did point out in my review was that they intend to put an underground service along the centerline of that twenty-foot easement. If I were a lot owner that required that twenty-foot easement as access, I would want to be very sure that my access was not blocked, especially at the most critical times of the year, when I had to get into my property to check my cranberry product, my cranberry land because of frost, for irrigation, for checking certain things. So I would think it would behoove the applicant to be able to show that they will not in any way interfere with the construction or interfere with the operation of those other properties at critical times of the year. There may be times when it's most appropriate to partially block that roadway in terms of construction time. For example, during the winter months, once bogs are flooded, once activities have ceased, the crops are picked, things are pretty dormant. That might be a time to do it if the process is allowed. Other times of the year are very critical, especially this time of year when you've got frost, when you're going into the, the actual harvesting of the, of the property, you can't have that blocked off for any length of time. So I think it's critical to find that out, and I would behoove the applicant to provide a documentation that says that they have the right to go in there and to utilize that twenty-foot easement for anything other than simple access.
Okay, and, and a plan is.
Yes, sir.
Well, one, one second, Betsy.
Yes, sorry.
So in addition to that, what their, what their plan is for the actual construction, if they are in fact entitled to, to put that, that line in? Time of year, method, interruption, that type of thing?
Yeah, as, as best I can hear what you said.
Sign language.
There's also another solar array coming in right after that one. The Shurkran is directly above this, so you have solar, 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 solar.
Yep, all using that same easement?
Yes, as well as a large sand operation right now, well, for the last year and a half, excuse me. So I mean, we got to be clear on that path. I mean, there's a, Cranberry industry uses it every day, the solar array next to this one is going to use it, and the solar array after that uses it on a regular basis. I walk my dog down there all the time, and there's a lot of action, action down there, and more, more coming.
Yep.
Yeah, if I may, Chair King, Betsy Mason?
Yes.
With regard to whether we have the, the legal right to use that right-of-way for something other than access, specifically utilities, yes, and I will provide documents to Mr. Buckland tomorrow, we can certainly discuss it. With regard to timing of construction, of course, we are absolutely willing to, I mean, I think we may even have an obligation to consult with the other, other property owners who use that right-of-way. As Mr. Riley correctly points out, there were a very long list of property owners who were affected by the construction of Route twenty-five, and to whom the state gave the right of access and utility placement within that, that right-of-way. So, yeah, we can certainly agree to reasonable conditions regarding when, when we can do the construction, and then beyond that, whatever, whatever further you think may be necessary. It seems to me that it likely will primarily be just the, the time of construction, we certainly schedule that so as not to interfere with cranberry operations, or even just the, you know, town, town use of the, of the access line.
Okay, thank you. Anything else? Nope, okay. Hearing none, seeing none, I would entertain a motion to continue this public hearing to six thirteen, twenty twenty-two.
So moved.
Motion by Sam Corbett, seconded by Carl Schultz, to a vote. Sherry?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Jane?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, six zero zero, to continue, we'll see you in June.
Thank you very much, have a good night.
For anybody who might be here or online, I should have done this earlier, I apologize, the hearing and possible vote for seven dash twenty-two Site Plan Review, I'm sorry, three dash twenty-two Site Plan Review, five Doty Street, the applicant requested a continuance to prepare some more comment, well, some more response to the peer review. Do we vote on that? Should we be voting on that to accept that continuance request?
Yes.
Okay, so I'd entertain a motion to accept the applicant's request for continuance to six thirteen, twenty twenty-two.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Carl Schultz, seconded by Jane Gleason, for a vote. Sherry?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Jane?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Carl?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye, six zero zero, to continue.
Six thirteen, Aaron.
Okay. Hearing a possible vote, Project thirty-six dash twenty-one, modification, disbursement permit, Site Plan Review, Bay Point Club LLC, Phase Four, nineteen Bay Point Drive, MAP nine, lots one oh oh four B and one oh oh four A dash one dash seven, dash one, seven, eight new townhouse buildings, seven new eight-unit townhouse buildings.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening. It's all yours, Tim.
Um, we're here this evening to finalize any additional questions you may have, and look for a possible vote this evening on our application.
Okay, um, I have, I have three.
Go ahead, your chair.
Yeah, I'm going to beat Carl out this time.
All mine are going to be asked.
Oh, okay. So, from what I understand, we're faced with two obvious questions and one new question. So the first question has been an ongoing concern or dispute, whatever you want to call it, as far as the sewer usage, and who's responsible for what, who owns what. I had an opportunity to speak with town council to get some guidance, so that I didn't shoot myself in the foot, and it's his opinion that on this particular subject, this is a dispute between two private parties, does not involve the planning board whatsoever.
I agree.
So we're going to take, we're going to take that subject off the table, that's, that's over and done with. It has been confirmed through the sewer commissioner that what was stated is in fact accurate, that the calculations for the additional sewer usage for this phase has already been factored in well before the moratorium was put into place. So again, that, that's an odd issue. So it, from my standpoint, unless someone else has a different standpoint, sewer is off the table, we're done with that subject. The second, for me, is the, the ongoing concern about the planting area and the driveway design that kind of encroaches on the road, road layout. This is my opinion, we obviously can, can talk about it a little more if you want. Right now, there's, there's nothing but trees and vegetation on the proposed, the property, part of the property in question, correct?
Correct.
The, the road layout extends out into the forest.
Correct.
Okay. You are going to clear some of that forest, put in some curving, some plantings in its place.
Correct.
So you are in fact putting yourself in harm's way. If you ever have to dig it up for utility right easements or whatnot, it's on you. You're going to rip up your own stuff, you're going to do what you got to do, and then you're going to rebuild your own stuff.
Correct.
Okay, so for me, I, I don't see that as a, a roadblock on this anymore. So, for me, I, I don't see that as a, a roadblock on this anymore. The, um, the, the third subject is a little more challenging. Um, it just came to, to light the other day, it hasn't been discussed, um, in any of the public hearings. But, uh, just make sure I understand it correctly, your parking, your parking space calculation, the total number that you calculate takes into account all the garage spaces, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
So, the, the plan shows those parking garage spaces as 12 by 18 feet, and where we've got a limit, a size limit of minimum nine and a half feet by 19 feet for a parking stall as the counted stalls. I would like to see those garage units lengthened to a minimum of that 19 feet. You've already got more than the nine and a half feet, but extend the length of them to at least 19 feet.
Yeah, because technically, they don't, they don't meet zoning for a parking spot.
And that's a, that's a zoning, that has to, that looks at zoning, that doesn't look at, at architecture. I mean, as an industry standard, I would say that I would expect the garage to be 22 to 24 feet long, but we, that's not under our purview. Um, but 19 feet is if you're counting them as stalls, so...
So, if we are going to legitimately count them as parking spaces, they need to meet the zoning requirements for parking spaces. So, they're, they're a foot short right now.
Okay.
So, that would, if, if we do move forward and, and grant an approval, that would certainly be a condition of approval, would be that, that needs to be addressed.
Okay.
That, that, those are my three. Uh, I'll open it up to comments and questions, Sherri?
Nothing from me.
Michael?
Nothing.
Nothing. Jane?
I said my piece.
You said your piece. Sam?
You took my wind out. It was all sewer, sewer, it's been a big fight.
Yep. Carl?
Uh, two points, first, to follow up on the, uh, parking issue. I, I understand, what does that do to the building? I mean, you have to redesign, redesign the buildings to, to do this, or how do you, how do you do this?
Yes, we need to get back with the architect, and we need to extend that space. How many spaces do we have?
Total?
Yes.
In the garage?
In total.
In total, it's 229.
And how many are required?
Less than that.
I think it's 104, I think it's two per unit. So, we have a plethora of parking spaces, and I happen to agree with you, I, I think another foot is, is fine, I, you know, I'll go back.
I, I think if, unless you're driving to Prius?
So, right, I, no, um, I, I, that point went by me in my review of all of this. I need to talk to him about how we're moving that demising petition, but in, and, and we absolutely will look at doing that. But in all cases, we, we have sufficient parking on-site and in addition, if you don't count those. And I also will go back and, and look to see how we can extend it an additional amount.
Yeah, that was, that was an if, if you're, if they're part of your parking count, then it needs to be the 19 feet.
Right.
But I would also, I would, as an architect, I would point out that, that the industry standard is bigger. I did look at some, uh, current vehicle sizes and, uh...
Not much fits.
There are, there are a few vehicles out there that are on the larger side. A Yukon, a Yukon would not fit, an Escalade would not fit.
Right.
So, I, you know, I, I'm sure that you may have tenants who drive cars like that. That's not, you know...
That could actually, not that it matters as far as the parking count, but that could actually be a detriment to sales.
I agree with you, uh, it was news to me this evening, thank you, and we'll be back with our architect to address that.
Well, and it looked to me that the way you would frame it, it would not really...
Right.
You wouldn't be able to get to the door.
To a point of being very difficult.
Right.
I mean, you...
Yeah, it's an unfinished basement.
There are a couple of, of unit, or there's one unit type that is repeated that you would need to revise the stair location, and it could be just a matter of adjusting...